No, it's gonna be dusk.
Here he comes. Taking Scott's place.
Yeah.
Scott, man.
What have I told you?
Twenty seconds to go.
After school, you still have.
Hang on.
Oh, no.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the August 1st, 2022 Crestille City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a sovereign public, which is a standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Brother.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Boucher.
Here.
Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Gazzal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Mark Sapidi.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
And Joe Kubel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll go ahead with the agenda items. First is the approval of the minutes from the work session held on July 11th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on July 11th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
abstain.
Joe Kubel.
Yes.
And Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you also have before you the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on July 18th, 2022. Motion would be in order.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazzal, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of the City Council Meetings held on July 18th, 2022. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
And Joe Kubel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're missing the 22nd? The work session?
The 25th?
25th.
Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody pulled my agenda here.
Yeah, we are short staffed, so the minutes did not get done. There was a person on vacation.
Okay, thank you.
But they will be on your next, um, agenda. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our City Attorney. Our City Attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike. Any questions of City Attorney?
I have a question for him. Um, can I, uh, can I, uh, please have a legal explanation about a process, uh, if there was a motion and a second, and there is a roll call to be put a meeting into a work session? Can you explain what is, um, the next step if it wasn't done?
Guess I don't quite understand.
So, correct. So, the last City Council Meeting, you were present at it. We had a motion by John Boucher, seconded by Tina Oberlin, yes, and for two ordinance, 1689 and 1869, to be put on the following work session, and there was a roll call.
Okay.
So that's like, I'm trying to understand, when there's a motion and there's a roll call, so that's like a serious?
Yes.
Action, correct?
Yes.
So if it was not done, the following meeting, what do you do now? Is that you're breaking?
Um, I, I don't know. I mean...
Do you need help?
I guess I'm trying to figure out what direction. I mean, is there some?
What I'm trying to understand is, what is the point of us voting on, what is the point of having a motion and having a roll call if it's not gonna be taking actions for it? And anything that we do here? I mean, is any consequences for it? Is there any?
I guess I'm trying to determine what consequences you might be looking for.
I'm not looking for consequences. I'm just looking at...
Yes, Mark. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
What kind of a action the council needs to take at this point if, if there is a motion, right? Like, can you define then? I feel like you cannot, you don't wanna answer. Can you define what is the point of a motion?
Well, if there's a motion and a roll call, and there's a direction of the council, what the, what is directed to be done should be done.
Thank you.
If it's not done...
So what I'm asking then, you just answered my question.
But I thought your question was then, what happens if it's not done? And I don't know...
Well, it's the same thing. If it's, the action is not taken, so what is the point of making a motion if it's not gonna be?
I guess along, along those lines is, what's the reason it wasn't done versus where the consequences were? Is there, were you given a direction to do otherwise?
Well, my understanding was that after the, the actual tapes were listened to, there was some, I guess, confusion as to whether next agenda meant the next council meeting agenda, or the next agenda meaning the work session, if I understand correctly. That it wasn't clear what the motion was.
But still, you have a motion. Even though you don't understand it, you still need to bring, still putting it on the agenda, and then you table it after that. That's the proper thing to do it.
Well, but if the thought was that what was meant by the motion was to bring it back at the next regular meeting, because there was some discussion, I think...
The discussion was the work session. It wasn't for City Council Meeting. It was very clearly...
I did not listen to the tapes, so I don't know...
But you were here. You were present that night.
But I don't remember. I remember that Glenn said something about, "I don't think it needs further discussion. It can just come back for a vote at the next council meeting", which would have been today. What the actual motion was made by Alderman Boucher, and then what was the roll call vote, was, I thought, to table the matter. And then there was another...
No, correct. Let me correct you. There's a minutes for that. Mr. Albert and Mr. Kubel made the motion to table it. After that, we had a motion, if you want me to pull the minutes for you. There was a motion done by John Boucher and Tina Oberlin to put this other amendment on the work session. And we made a roll call, and it passed.
Okay.
So now, a meeting comes, the agenda is not showing that. If there's a misunderstanding, or there is emails, there is phone calls, um, you still need to put it on the agenda because it was a legal vote made for that.
If that was, if that was the roll call vote, then it should have been on the agenda.
It should have been on the agenda. Now, if you don't have the proper information for it, then we could table it, then say, you know what, it is on the agenda. So I just wanna make sure, what is the purpose of making a motion and made a roll call and vote on something if it's not gonna be amended?
Well, the purpose of making a motion and a roll call is that it would be done. That's the purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our City Administrator, Jim Marino. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three items on the agenda for you tonight. The first item pertains to the Illinois Municipal League Conference. At the previous work session, there was discussion about authorizing the expenditures for attendance at that conference. So the item tonight is approving authorization of the expenditures and registration for council members, the mayor, the clerk, treasurer, and administrator to attend the conference, um, and have the associated expenses for hotel accommodations, transportation to events, mileage, and reimbursement up to $100 per day, not to exceed $300. It's my understanding that was, what was discussed at the work session. So that is what's before you tonight for approval.
So move as presented.
Second.
I have a question. The budgeted amount that's in your memo, is that actual dollars that are budgeted for this? Because that, we get a, a good turnout from all that were invited. I don't think that would be enough to cover it.
That's the amount we have budgeted in the, I believe it's the training line, line item. That's the amount budgeted in that line item.
But if we're approving these additional expenses and enough people go, what happens if it exceeds that amount?
You have to do an amendment to the budget. Thank you.
You have, you have a couple of different line items that you can pull that from. For instance, one might be like dues and subscription. Uh, you, you can, uh, you can use additional monies over that $5,000 budget from other line items, as long as you don't exceed for that, for that fund. There's some places you can pull.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
There's one other thing on here. Room upgrade. That's up to the individual. That's not on here. That was one of the votes. We have to add that to the, to that there.
That was my fault. When I sent it to Jim, I, I left, forgot that part on it.
To the motioner, add the...
Yes.
Uh, room upgrades would be on each one's individual account. Second?
Yes.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin, for the approval of the IML Conference for 2022. Any more questions or comments?
Um, I'm just asking because I know she's been off sick. Who's, who's going to be taking care of this in her absence?
Uh, Maribor will take care of it.
It's my understanding she hasn't been here.
Right. She's able to do it from home, though.
Because I've got no response, and I assumed it was because she was not here.
Okay. I'll follow up with her.
Yeah, because I don't wanna hear later that we didn't get our reservations because she wasn't able to do it.
Okay. I'll check with her.
I don't know if policy allows us to work from, from home.
Okay. Well, we have a bit of a quandary then, don't we?
Would appear to be so.
Does our policy not allow employees to work from home?
It doesn't disallow it or allow it.
It doesn't disallow it or allow it.
Well, what does it do then?
Does it allow it? It allows it.
It's gotta do one thing or the other. It can't, it can't do this, it can't do that. Well, what does it do there? What's the third item?
Or does it pertain to the job? Well, if they are able to work from home, they should be able to work from home, because then it continues the flow of work that needs to be done. So if they're unable to work from home, then, you know, they're, they just don't work from home. But if they're willing to work from home, they can do that, because then we can keep the workflow going, and we don't have a disruption in operations.
Well, what I was meaning is there's jobs that won't allow you, you know, there's jobs workers have at the city that wouldn't allow them to work from home.
Correct.
Granted, someone in the office could take a laptop home and work from, but someone in public works wouldn't be able to do their job on the street from home. Correct.
I think that was the point why we invested three years ago or so, laptop for all the staff to work from home, especially with COVID. I think that was the purpose why we bought all these laptops, right?
But I think our current policy does not allow someone to be paid from home. That's sick time.
What? They can work but not get paid? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry. I just don't understand this.
I don't think we have an allowance in that policy for someone to work from home.
Can we have this policy brought to us, so we can review this? Because I don't understand. You know, we have to have clarity on this. Either they can or they can't. I mean, there's one or the other. I mean, we can't have all this gray area. If somebody's working from home, of course, they should be paid. But if they're not working from home, then somebody needs to take care of their, their job.
Well, if they're working from home, they are paid.
Is, is the person that's supposed to handle this working from home right now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then I'm very unclear as to why none of my emails were returned or my phone calls.
I believe the vote would have to be taken at this table at first.
Okay.
Before reservations can be made, if it passes.
Well, if they're home, they're getting, and they're sick, they're getting paid sick day anyway. So what's the big difference?
The sick day.
Huh?
They're having to take the sick day.
They're using a sick day, then they wouldn't be working.
More confusion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Hmm, yes.
Claudia Gazzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapidi.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubel.
No.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
No.
Motion carries.
That was for the IML Conference.
That was for the IML, yes.
Correct. Okay.
With this action taken tonight, does this have to be brought up every single year? Can it be a budgeted item going forward?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Every year this comes up, and we sit here and argue at the table about it. Is it something that we can have budgeted in the item for, for years going forward, so we don't have to rehash it every year?
Yeah. It is budgeted, so there's no need for it to be approved every year if it's budgeted.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is redundant, you're saying?
Well, I think it's because we made a change this year with it, right? That's my impression. But I still think that it was, should have been under, it should have been understood that we were gonna go to the IML Conference, and she should have been registering people, you know, for the last few weeks. The only thing that changed is that per diem.
Well, that's my confusion. He just said that she couldn't register us till we voted on it, but...
The early bird registration, to my knowledge, is good until September 2nd.
Yeah, but we know how quickly that place books up. And I think it opened in June.
And I thought it was like August 10th on the...
August 8th or August 10th, yeah.
Okay, on the, uh, early bird registration.
Early bird? I, I seen it on one of the flyers that it was September 2nd.
Maybe regular registration could still be, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the other item is, uh, an amendment to Chapter 2.26 of the Code of Ordinances. Uh, the City Attorney was asked to draft different versions of an amendment to Chapter 2.26, 2.26 of the Code of Ordinance pertaining to the Finance Director position. Three versions of an amendment were provided to you. Uh, I indicated in my memo the reasons why I felt the only change that should be made is pertaining to the, um, providing of financial reports. I don't see there, uh, I don't think there's a need to change who the Finance Director reports to. And I indicate my reasons why, one of which is that by making that change, Chapter 2.26 will conflict with Chapter 2.22. Um, it breaches the fundamental distinction between the legislative, legislative and administrative functions of local government. I think that commingling the roles of elected officials and managers creates conflicts, confusion, and inefficiencies, and exposes, exposes management of our operations to politics. And I explained in my memo as well that information on the cost of the city center project and the public works building has been provided to you many times since I've, I've been here. So in, in that case, then, I think the only change that should be made is to amend the code to only require the additional financial reporting requirement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Stiff to review the ordinances.
As Jim said, there are three versions. They are all identical insofar as it contains the three additional duties that we discussed at the last, uh, meeting. Specifically, if you look to page three, it's duties K, L, and M. Those are the same in all of them. All three of them also add N and O, which are the additional financial reporting requirements. That they differ fundamentally in basically the creation of office. Uh, one is exactly the way you said that you wanted it, uh, at the last meeting. Basically, in the creation of office and appointment, it makes the Finance Director, uh, reporting to the City Treasurer. And it adds in the last duty, Duty P, perform other duties as assigned by the City Treasurer. So that's the, the one that I was directed to do per the last meeting. The second one is kind of a blend. Uh, it again has the same, uh, K, L, and M, N, O, only P basically allows the City Treasurer or the City Administrator to assign additional duties to the Finance Director. And in the creation of office and appointment, it makes the Finance Director, uh, reportable to the City Treasurer, but supervised on a day-to-day basis by the City Administrator. And then the third and final one is also a blend. It again contains the same, uh, K, L, and M, adds the N and O, uh, and then under Duty P, it allows, uh, the City Administrator and/or the City Treasurer to assign additional, additional duties. And in the creation of office and appointment, it basically says that the Finance Director will be supervised by the City Administrator, Administrator, but shall also be responsible to provide reports and information directly to the City Treasurer as requested by the City Treasurer. That, I think, cures the potential conflict that has been pointed out with the City Administrator duties. Uh, but those three are submitted for your consideration. Any changes that you wanna make can be made. If somebody has some different thought, I just thought that these three covered in general what has been discussed.
I make a motion to approve the first ordinance as directed by...
Can we ask the Treasurer's opinion?
Oh, excuse me. I mean, I thought he had an opinion.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I asked for, was number one. There's only one, uh, one thing I'd like to see added in addition to it, and that's just the preparation of 1099s, which would go under F. Just an additional duty for the, uh, Finance Director.
Preparation of 1099s.
That's an ordinance one?
Yep.
Correct. It's, it's, or it is absent from each of those, but I'd like it added to.
Added, okay.
Well, that would be my...
Make a motion to approve the first one with that added.
Uh, second.
The addition is preparation of 1099s.
Yes, sir.
Here we have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for ordinance amending Title II Administration of Personnel, Chapter 26, Finance Director of the City of Crestille, which would be page 27 through 31 in your packet. Questions or comments from City Council?
Uh, Mayor, I have a few comments. Um, I'm gonna be voting against this. I, I think this is a big disservice to our residents by muddying up the chain of command. All of us sitting up here are part-time employees that try to do the best for our residents, and we hire appropriate, appropriate personnel to do the jobs that are, they, they're highly qualified for. And I feel like this is just gonna cause that confusion with not only the Finance Director, but the entire staff in that department. Um, I think that I'm disappointed by the fact that we did table it for the work session, and, and here we are, presented with three very big conversation pieces that we're not gonna spend a little bit more time digging into. Um, so those are my thoughts, and that's why I'll be voting no.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll be voting no also, for the same reasons that Nate just passed along.
I'm not surprised, uh, down there, they're voting no, but I don't think in the past we had any communication problems. Um, like I said, one of the meetings, the City Treasurer was elected by the resident of Crestille. And when we sit and say there's, um, all the information has been given, that's not true. Uh, the 109 came out in Ju, in January. It was not given to us into an email July 8th. And staff were told clearly to not to share this information to Treasurer. So we are hiding information. We keep talking about transparency here, and there is no transparency. Um, talking about the building, took me a year and a half asking information about the building. Um, our Treasurer, elected by the people, kept requesting information about Public Works Building for the over $2 million to, uh, the information to come to the council, and how many months it took on that? More than six, seven months. So, um, everyone has a time for their opinion. You can vote the way you want. Um, in the end, as the Mayor always says, the majority rules. And I think that is a good, um, thing. Transparency should be number one in everything we do in the city, because that's what we're hired to do. Sorry, let me correct that. We were not hired. We were elected by the people. And the people that were hired, their job is to give information, because they're hired by the city, and they're paid by taxpayer money. So our staff should be transparent as well. And that is my comment.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
No, I think, I think Claudia is right. During the election, he won the Office of, of Treasurer, and he should be the off, the person that to talk to in the Treasurer's office. And the people should be responsible towards him. So I think it's a good ordinance.
Okay, I'll give you my comments. I kinda know how this vote's gonna go. But these are my comments, mine alone. I believe that having the Finance Director report to an elected official would be a poor management practice that will create confusion, create conflict, and create inefficiencies that will disrupt the day-to-day operations of that office. In my opinion, this is not good government, and this is not in the best interest of the City of Crestille. This is strictly about politics. The system that has been in place for the last eight years, that everybody agreed to, is not broken. I guess you have to ask yourself, why do we have a City Administrator? His role is to manage the day-to-day operations of this city. It appears, from the comments that I've heard, some of the City Council members have issues with some of our past employees. But let it be clear that when Steve took over as interim, when Jim came on as City Administrator, and Lisa came on as Finance Director, they brought these issues to our attention. And this Treasurer and this City Council was made aware of the issues that they brought before us, and we acted on this. It seems to me now that you're penalizing our City Administrator, past interim, interim City Administrator and Finance Director for doing their job. You're cutting the City Administrator at his knees. Something that he should be in charge of is the budget and all the other things that happen in, in the Finance Department. And why what this vote's gonna happen here in a little while, I'd like somebody to explain to me how you feel that is good government. I'd also like somebody to justify to me, to answer this question. How do you justify, and how is it more efficient to have an elected Treasurer who will probably be in this office, no disrespect, Glenn, between one and five hours per week, to handle the day-to-day operations of the Treasurer's office, when we pay good money to a professional who's been doing that job for 20 years, who's here 40 hours a week, and should be responsible for the day-to-day operations and manage that office? How is that good government and in the best interest of this city? So my personal opinion is I'm totally against this move. With that, if there are any other comments, I would ask for a roll call.
Yeah, let me ask you. I, I got a comment. You say, uh, it works better this way. When we have, we had, one administrator was John, another one was Cameron, the other one was Jim, and now we had Heather. And the old system worked fantastically. Everything got done, no problems. How come all of a sudden we needed somebody to take over this? How come all of a sudden we needed somebody to take over this where there were no problems to begin with? But doubt there's more problems than we ever had in our life. So tell me what's so good about this, the way you want it?
I remember all the compliments that were made of that office when the changes were made over the last eight years. And there's not a one up here that can say they didn't make a positive comment, even to some of the past employees that were here, of the turnaround that was made in the Treasurer's office and how well things worked. Seemed like everything kind of fell apart the last six months before the changes came along. And we addressed those, and we talked about those the last couple meetings. I think this is a knee-jerk reaction. Again, in my opinion, this is a political move, it's not what's right for the City of Crest Hill.
I disagree with you, it's not political at all. You mentioned Steve Golden. Steve Golden worked really well with staff and the council. We never had a conflict, we never had a problem. For many years, the city ran with no Finance Director, only a Treasurer, which was a big mistake. Then we brought a Finance Director, which I thought was an amazing idea, because like you said, a Treasurer is not here full-time. Correct, I agree with you on that. And the Treasurer, out of his kindly heart, and because he trusted the administration back in the day, he decided to do that move. But now, since information's been held from us, and like I said earlier, we are responsible for the finance of the city, and when there's no transparency, and when there is information that's been hidden from not only the council, from the Treasurer, he has to beg for information, that's what makes it wrong.
I think I can make this statement, that Glenn got more information from our current Finance Director than ever before.
Maybe I need to FOIA some emails and prove you wrong.
I will address that. I have gotten more information from the Finance Director, as well as more things have been uncovered of bad past practices since her arrival here. She has done an incredible, incredible job, head and shoulders, better than we've ever had. However, there still is a, for lack of a better term, a filter that keeps information from getting to me and to you. And this is more not about me having authority over that office. Ninety-five percent of what her duties are defined by ordinance. That doesn't take supervision, that takes ensuring that those things are done, and to verify that those things are being done. We have had, and I'm not comfortable to say at this point, that we're getting all the information, or that you're getting all the information necessary for you to make decisions. And this is to open up that pipeline. You know, I'm not going to talk about what poor management practice is and what it's not. In theory, it should have been all right. In practice, it has been less than adequate. So I don't want to hear about politics from you. I don't want to hear about poor management practices, and I don't want to hear about what good government is. This is a step in the right direction, in my opinion, and I'd like to see the vote called, please.
I have one comment. I believe in the memo, it says that creating this, an employee reporting to an elected official is a bad idea. What does the City Administrator only report to currently, as it states?
Mayor?
One person. One elected official. But yet, that's okay. How is that any different?
And that was created in 2006 or '07, whenever we hired our first City Administrator?
Not saying it's not, it wasn't created, and that's how it is in the ordinance, but if changing this structure should not be done on the basis of that's bad politics, having an employee report to an elected official when we're already doing it. So we have to be consistent. If it's good in one case, then why can't it be good in another?
Roll call.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
No.
Joe Kubal.
Nope.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, ordinance 1918.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Jim?
The last item is approving change orders for the construction work at the City Center. At the July 5th council meeting, the City Council approved a supplement to the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Appropriations Ordinance for additional construction work at the City Center. Since that meeting, Harbor Contractors has been working with contractors to obtain firm prices and consolidate separate work tasks into one change order for each contractor. They provided me with a list of work that needs to be done in the form of change orders, and a couple contracts, and a proposal. So this was listed in my memo, and then the detailed information from Harbor was also included in the packet. I also provided that supplemental budget that you had approved, so that you can see the items that were listed in the budget that was presented to you in July, and then the corresponding change orders. This does not constitute all the work that needs to be done, this is what Harbor has gathered to date. Once they get this approved, they can start contacting contractors and have them ordering material or starting to do work. Harbor's still working on compiling the costs and information for the other items. Those will be brought to you at a future meeting for approval.
So move is presented. Second.
You didn't have the clothes rooms or closets, you want to call them for all the people out here, have you?
No, we're not doing a closet. That was stripping. We're not constructing a closet.
For each department, no? You're still going to come in a bag door between the clothes in one closet?
No, we're not constructing that closet.
It ain't been built, Jim.
Oh, okay.
At least going in mind with Harbor, as far as like what they originally estimated, I know this is just a part of the-
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kubal, to approve change order with PT Farrell Construction Company in the amount of $162,025. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next one?
That's all I have.
Oh, we're not voting on those individually?
You're going to go down each one of them?
No, that was my consensus, according to the agenda. Prove the following change order.
The motion is called for PT Farrell.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know how you wanted to approve it, if you wanted to approve them collectively or individually.
I would think we would need to do these individually.
Because they are on the agenda.
Yeah, that's your choice.
Okay, the second one then is for change order with Mechanical Concepts of Illinois in the amount of $97,070.58.
So move.
No. Motion?
So move. Second.
Who made the first?
I did.
Nate did.
No, whatever.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for a change order with Mechanical Concepts of Illinois, amount is $97,070.58. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Motion for change order with Tim Electric in the amount of $63,820.
So move.
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Elder Person Oberlin, for a change order with Tim Electric in the amount of $63,820. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, we have a change order with Applied Communications in the amount of $9,475.36.
So move is presented.
Second.
Motion by Elder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of change order with Applied Communications in the amount of $9,475.36. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
We have a motion would be in order for a change order with Modern Fold in the amount of $895.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Elder Woman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Albert, for the approval of change order with Modern Fold in the amount of $895. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Motion for a change order with Ram Corp. Incorporated in the amount of $18,670.45.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Elder Woman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of change order with Ram Corp. in the amount of $18,670.45. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
And Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Do you have a change order with Flooring First in the amount of $8,629?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Elder Woman Giselle, seconded by Alderman, was that Kubal? Did I hear down there? Albert? Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, a motion for a contract with Institutional Equipment in the amount of $16,459.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Elder Woman Giselle. Questions or comments? For Institutional Equipment, the amount of $16,459. Roll call.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
We have a motion for a contract with Financial Applications Corporation in the amount of $21,512.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Elder Woman Giselle, for a contract with Financial Applications in the amount of $21,512. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
And Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Finally, a proposal with Citadel Lock &amp; Security Company in the amount of $271.42.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert, with the proposal with Citadel Lock &amp; Security Company in the amount of $271.42. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
What was the amount on this one?
$271.42.
It says $291.22 on mine.
That's because that amount included tax, which we don't pay.
Well, we should make that clear.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
And Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Jim?
No.
Okay. Any questions of City Administrator?
Just one. With all of these, we just went through with the cost changes and everything, what amount does that give us in exceeding what our goal was? How much over budget are we, I should say, with these additions?
Are you asking for the total cost of what these items are?
As well as the added to the cost that we've already spent on the City Center.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to get you that information. Well, actually, you'll have to get that information.
Okay.
Moving on, Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda I have before you this evening. After Lane Christiansen Company removed the public equipment from well seven to make the necessary repairs, they've discovered deficiencies in the well, pipe, and motor. At this time, I'd be asking for a change order, number one, with Lane Christiansen, for the not to exceed the amount of $23,922 for the items listed in the memo.
So move is presented.
Second.
A motion by Elder Person Oberlin, seconded by Elder Woman Giselle, for the approval of change order number one, with Lane Christiansen Company to complete repairs to well number seven, in the amount not to exceed $23,922. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Boucher.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Giselle.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiti.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
I just have two pieces of informational item for you this evening. The first is on the website and Facebook earlier today. The Public Works Department released the 50/50 Tree Program, which we do every fall. Applications are available at City Hall and at Public Works. Those applications are due back to Public Works or City Hall by September 30th of this year. We do have a vast variety of trees that they had at the fields this year, so there's a little longer list than normal. Second, we do have a special work session on Thursday to read in regards to the West Plant Bid, the West Plant Bid, and the agenda packet will be coming out tomorrow, at the 7:00 PM. Sorry. Did I have to answer any questions that you may have?
Questions of Public Works? All right, thanks, Mark. Moving on, City Engineer, there is no agenda items this evening. Community Development, Tony Blazekowski. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening. I have no agenda items, but I wanted to thank the public and elected officials for turning out to Cheesecake by James opening event this weekend. He's a great guy. I hope he's very successful. this weekend. Um, he's a, he's a great guy. I hope he's very successful. I think he hugged me five times, um, once when I got there, once when I left, and three times in between. Uh, just very excited about the spot. Um, I, he ran out of cheesecake, at least the ones my daughter and wife wanted by the time I left noon Saturday, so they were very disappointed, but I'm hoping to get back there again. But, uh, just thanked the public and elected officials for attending, and, uh, we wish him a lot of good luck. Thank you.
I, I do want to comment. I did get a phone call from a resident today who came in to get a building permit here and, um, said that the gentleman that waited on her was extremely pleasant and helpful and, um, just, she was just very, very pleased with how well she was treated by him. So I hope you pass that along to him.
That would be absolutely, and Greg Knowles is our front counter permit clerk, and thank you very much for the compliment.
Uh huh.
Tony, did, um, I just find out today that, um, our second full timer is no longer with us?
Uh, so, uh, about four weeks ago, our building official resigned, and shortly thereafter, our building inspector retired. Um, so we are short staff. Uh, we do have a code consultant that's doing plan review and inspection services for us right now, um, in the immediate future, and our intent is to republish for both positions. So, um, I'd say we're hanging in there right now. Um, but yes, we do have two positions that are currently vacant and a consultant who's helping us out.
Thank you. And I do have to agree with you on the cheesecake. He's, he's a very happy person. Uh, he's, uh, he's, he's amazing with the people. Uh, he was sold out by two P M. He had to shut down his doors early on, on Saturday.
You better get busy making more cheesecake.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Uh, Police Department, our Police Chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. One thing I would like to discuss is tomorrow night, we are hosting our first annual national night out. It's our first for the city and the police department. Uh, it's going to be between five and eight P M. At Brett Hasser Park, at one nine six two three Remwood Road. Uh, we're going to have face painting. We're actually going to have a helicopter landing, a touch of truck with the help of its, uh, Public Works Department and the Fire Department. Canine demonstrations. We have an exotic bug, a reptile show if anybody's seen it before. It's pretty neat. I don't like snakes, but, you know, I think they're not the big snakes anyway. I, uh, I'm excited for this for a lot of reasons. One being, it's a good connection for our police department to have with the community, and if several of you that have been on the board when I started, that was kind of one of my pushes, and I'm really excited to see this happen. So my, uh, community outreach, outreach is huge. We've been struggling a little bit with it, but we're, we finally got it on the board. So if you guys all want to come out and check it out, it should be a fun time. So again, it's going to be from five to eight at Brett Hasser Park, one nine six two three Remwood Road, and, uh, come on out and enjoy. Have a good time with us. So, thank you.
And Steve, we, um, chief, we are going to have extra security, correct?
Absolutely.
Any other questions of Police Chief? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on, the Mayor's Report. I have one agenda item, uh, with the, uh, the owner of Forza Table and Tap, um, surrendering his liquor license to myself. Uh, there is a need to reduce the number of Class A liquor licenses in the city of Crest Hill, which are tavern licenses, from seven to six. So I have before you an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the city of Crest Hill, section five point zero eight, one hundred A, um, in regards to alcoholic beverages.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the reduction in the number of Class A liquor licenses in the city of Crest Hill from seven to six. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance nineteen nineteen.
Okay, uh, that is it for the Mayor. I, I would certainly like to welcome Cheesecake by James also to the city of Crest Hill. I know his product is well-known throughout the entire region. I think it will make Crest Hill a destination point for several of the residents from surrounding communities also. So I wish him well, um, at his new business on Division Street. Any questions of the Mayor?
I have a question. Uh, is there any way we can have a work session, um, about that sub, that strip mall where Forza was, to make possible some restrictions on what kind of business to protect the residents across the street? Does something do that we can have certain type of restaurants or, just like the way we're going to do on this property? So we're going to have some restrictions on what's going to go on there?
I guess that would be a legal question. Can we make restrictions on one certain business?
Well, not just one business. I mean...
It's already zoned. Uh, I think the restrictions that are being discussed for this property is part of the development agreement, which you can't do going into it with the potential developer. I don't know that you can actually, I mean, it depends on what kind of restrictions, I guess, you want to place. So I mean, I, I think you can have a work session and talk
Like entertainment license, an example, entertainment, because it's not a banquet. Is there something like that that we can add to it, like, so we don't have to go through the same issue again?
I think what Tony and I can do is look at the zoning and try to come back with some ideas for you.
Because there's just something like we've been dragging for years with the comedy club before. I mean, there was always something, if you put restriction, we'll make everyone's life easier, the police, the residents, and all of us. I mean, just saying.
Legally, I just don't know how you can say if the one, one business...
I'm not saying one business. I'm saying the whole strip mall, because you're facing a retirement community. If there is such a thing that we can look into, I'm not saying one business. That would be discrimination, just one business.
You could look at changing your zoning code if there are certain uses that are, uses that you don't want to have in there, but that's going to have to go before the zoning board, and you have to publish notices, and have public hearings, et cetera, et cetera, and then you're probably going to get an objection from the owner.
I would think that the control would be if you have six licenses now, and that's what we have currently for taverns. If the city council would choose not to have any more taverns in the city of Crest Hill, that would be an ordinance.
Well, true.
Whatever.
But what about if you're going to have a restaurant with, with alcohol? I mean, if you...
A tavern license needs to be created by city council. A restaurant license is mayor's choice.
Yeah, but I think our definition of the tavern license would need to be looked at then, too.
Yeah.
Because there's a big difference, in my opinion, of certain establishments, and we don't clearly define that with a Class A liquor license.
I mean, it doesn't hurt to visit the audience and look at them, the tavern, entertainment, and all that, no?
I still think right now the restaurant license is the way it stands. It's pretty well explained in there as to what a restaurant is and how it operates and what that license would entail. So I don't think, you know, there's any big thing here to look at between a restaurant and a tavern. Hours are explained and everything seating, all that stuff, what its primary business is. I don't think we have to go through the whole liquor license. But, you know, if council wants to look at it and see if there's any changes to be made, but I think it's been working pretty well for a number of years. The only thing we have to look at is taverns. If we don't want any more taverns, if someone comes and wants to have a tavern, we don't have to approve a liquor license for a tavern. If it's a restaurant, there's no restrictions for that. It's got to be a restaurant. It's defined in there. So all we would have to do as the council is not...
So they had a tavern license?
Create another liquor license for a tavern.
But right now, there's not one with your passage of this ordinance just now. There is not one available.
Exactly. That's why I said we would have to create it.
Anybody that's looking to put another tavern in would have to...
Would you say no?
Would have to come to you to ask you to create another liquor license, uh, for that type of venue.
We'd have to go through the whole process to get to that point.
So what happens if somebody in another area of the city comes for a tavern license?
Same thing.
There's not one available right now.
There's not one available right now.
If somebody was to come in, I would tell them, we do not have one available. They could certainly fill out an application, but the council would need to create the license, and I can guarantee that.
Now, what, when, for the first apply, what were they applying for? A restaurant or a tavern?
Tavern. The main difference is that a restaurant needs to be seventy-five percent of the square footage of the building needs to be allocated towards food, towards kitchen, towards dining, towards waitstaff, all of that. Most restaurants, I think every restaurant that we have in the city of Crest Hill, they don't, uh, they stay open maybe as late as ten o'clock. The true tavern license, they open till one, two o'clock in the morning, and their sole source of income is the sale of alcohol, not the sale of food. We do have six legitimate taverns right now in the city of Crest Hill that do abide by that, and, again, council's choice. If, if you don't want to have another tavern in the city of Crest Hill, then your vote would have to be a no.
Okay.
I certainly think that we would not want to stop a legitimate establishment that's a restaurant that's going to serve alcohol, that would want to close at ten o'clock to be able to have a license there. As far as the entertainment goes, the entertainment is only for, as far as I'm concerned, it only affects me is when it, uh, a liquor establishment wants to have a, uh, entertainment license. Other than that, I believe it goes through the clerk's office. Does it not press the entertainment?
We should have never allowed that over there. That's the question, Tony.
Okay.
You're saying we shouldn't allow it to poison?
Uh, I didn't say that. I'm sure that we should have never allowed entertainment in that place, because it was a tavern. We should not allow entertainment licenses across from, for retirement.
Well, there are several of the six taverns that do have entertainment, and they don't cause a problem, so... Okay, moving on to our City Clerk's Report. Chris Verchay.
Thank you. The only thing I have to, um, announce tonight is our citywide garage sale will be August eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-one. Permits can be purchased in the clerk's office, Monday through Friday, from eight to four thirty P M. They are five dollars per permit, and the last day to get your name on the list is Tuesday, August sixteenth, and that's all I have to report.
Any questions of the city clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Um, City Treasurer's Report. Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I have two reports I want to make. One is on the regular overtime payroll. I apologize. The board packet has a duplicate of the quarterly comp buyback. There's not anything that requires approval. I will have a copy for you at work session next. Um, it's contractual, so it doesn't, uh, doesn't require approval. But our regular overtime payroll from July fourth through July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two was in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. You also see two reports of the quarterly comp buyback through July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. I do request a motion for approval of our list of bills, which issued through July twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-two, total three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
So moved. This presented.
Take it.
We have a motion by Elder Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Verchay for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verchay?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazzal?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I thank you all. Take any questions if you have any?
Yes. By some chance, can I get a copy of all of, uh, the attorney's bills for the city of Crest Hill, starting from September last year to this year? Someone see what this year cost us for this year. We'll debate about who's going to run what.
From September twenty...
Last year to this year.
Oh, so September twenty-one through...
Yep, through the twenty, the thirty-first of this year.
Okay.
That will be provided to all of us, won't it?
Right, Tina?
If you'd like, yes.
Yes.
And then Darrell, on the one request that you had regarding the update, that was, um, you have a spend a date. I can get you a current one on that. I can give you a tally of what these are expected to be, if that's all right. Would, is it council's pleasure to have a copy of those at work session next?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Glenn. Glenn, uh...
Can I ask another, ask another question, Mark? Glenn?
Yes, sir. Just let me take a note here. I'm sorry.
I think we get those updates by email from Jim, the last update that we got.
Yeah, you're, you're generally going to get at least a monthly, a monthly update on that. And these here are like commitments as the fullest expenditures, so I'll separate what...
But I'm talking about the building update.
Yes, and that'll just have expenditures, and this year is commitment or, or encumbered monies. Yes, sir.
Can we have that by next Monday at least?
Yes, now leave, uh, I would ask for another week on that.
No problem. You take it.
Just, just based on the fact that, that the finance director is on vacation this week?
Okay, could be two weeks then. I don't care.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be an agenda item. I can leave that on the days.
Yeah.
Okay. Be happy to.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Glenn, just to piggyback off of John's request, would that include then what, what projects or certain things were billed for?
I'm sorry, Nate, I just...
So if he's asking for a report on the, on the law firm, would that be itemized on the, like, the projects they're working on for us?
Well, I think, I, I think it has to be broken out that way. You're going to have fluctuations in what those legal bills are, and it could be development, it could be a, a construction, a whole lot of other things. But I'm assuming that the bills would have, you know, if your interest is in, in what it had to do with that, that ordinance work, you know, what that would total.
What department they got the, the new work for. That's probably got to be on there anyway.
Yeah, the, uh, Spation Taylor have very itemized, uh, billings. Their invoices are, they, they, now, now in some cases, it might be a half hour bill for three separate tidy up items, but in general, you will see what those, what those are. Anything else?
All right, unfinished business? We have nothing on the agenda, anyone? New business?
Um, I did request, I believe we all agreed, we, well, most of us, that we wanted the copy of that other ordinance to look at in regards to the city administrator. That was not supplied. Is there any reason why that didn't come?
The city administrator orders?
Is it?
Wait, it's in the code book. It's online. I just thought...
Well, can we get a copy of that and the contract as well supplied to us?
The, which contract?
For him.
Yes.
Now, as a case in point, when you say it's online, that's where sixteen eighty-nine and eighteen sixty-nine got.
Actually, if you just go to the PDF from the website, Crest Hill Code of Ordinances, you can go directly to the code, not the ordinance that enacted it, but the actual code itself is online on the website. You just go to section...
If you know exactly what that is.
Well, there's, there's an index, and under general administration, it's got each position. It's got Mayor, it's got, and if you just go to city administrator, you'll come up with the city administrator.
What I'm telling you is that it was from the website. If there was superseded, it should not be there. It should be replaced, if you might, if I guess.
I'm sorry.
Can we please have those supplied to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, committee liaison reports, anybody? City council comments, positive city council comments, anything you like, share with your constituents. You getting award one tonight?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Verchay?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Jefferson?
Nothing at this time.
Elder Woman Gazzal?
I, uh, want to thank, um, all the residents that came up, um, July twentieth to meet at the park. It was the biggest yet. We thought last time was big. This time was even bigger. Uh, want to thank, um, the police department. Ed Heidi, it's, it's a gift in that, there is no doubt. She always does amazing. Mark, you overdid it with your, uh, misstation. Um, thank you for everything you do, to your staff to blame. I've never seen somebody that runs so much like him. I want to thank the, uh, fire department, um, our first, um, first student for coming. The kids love the bus. I want to also thank the Rodman family for, um, for their help and for providing, um, chips for the kids, and to Tommy and Gordon Caris for, um, helping me to, um, to serve the, uh, the hot dogs. And that's pretty much. And also, Tony, one more thing, um, the resident of Willow Falls, they called me, and they want Andy's ice cream. So can you find a way, I was totally forgetting your report. Can you find a way to get us Andy's in Crest Hill?
I can certainly look into it. No guarantees.
What's it called?
Andy's Ice Cream.
Like the mint?
Andy's Custard.
Custard, so good. Custard, so good, yeah.
Elder Person Oberlin?
Nothing.
Alderman Sepiti?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Uh, nothing at this time, Mayor.
Alderman Kuhwal?
Nothing else, or Mayor.
Okay. Public comment. Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, address adoption.
Some of you know me. My name's Bill King. I worked for this city for a little over thirty-two years. A lot of people know me more, but I'm here because I got, uh, something to say to three people. When I retired before, during, and after, there's only three people in in this room that congratulated me for my hard work, wished me well. John Rocher, thank you. Christine Rocher, thank you. And Mr. Treasurer, I thank you.
Thank you.
You guys were the three people that were the only ones that came up to me before, during, and after, and told me what a great job I did for the city and how proud you guys were of me. I appreciate that. I'm sorry it took me so long to get back to you guys. I appreciate your words. I do have a question. Who would I give a written request for, for you to? Would that be you, Chris? Can I give it to you now?
Hmm?
Thank you. This is the information I need. I appreciate it. Another reason I'm here is my granddad told me something a long time ago. Evil flourishes when good men stand to do nothing. $3 million for a city hall, right? How'd it go to 19 million? I'm asking you.
I explained that on July 5th.
Huh?
I explained that on July 5th.
Well, I heard it from some other people. My wife refuses to let me watch council meetings. She don't want to buy a new set, I guess. But I'm asking now.
If you'd like to stick around after the meeting, I'll let you read exactly what I said.
No. Why, why do you always want people to stick around? Why can't you say it out loud? You got something to hide?
I have nothing to hide.
Then why can't you say it now?
I would be glad to share with you.
I don't want to share with you later. I want to share with you right now. That's why I'm here. I'm here right now, asking you the question. Answer me now, please.
I don't have the numbers in front of me right now.
You don't have the numbers, so...
If you'd like to wait till after the meeting, I'll sit down.
Is there any kind of investigation going on about this? I think there should be, don't you? $16 million is a lot of money. I'm a taxpayer now. Have been.
So am I.
No answer, right?
No.
Yes, I figured. Well, to make sure, I, uh, I've been talking to some people, too. You know, you, you told earlier about taking power away from the Treasurer, which we, the people in the city of Crest Hill, elected him for that reason. We want somebody to be watching the money in this town. Now somebody that sits in the back room and has rubber band fights. Oh, yeah, I saw that. 32 years in this town. I've seen a lot. I've heard a lot. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. I'm going to start talking. Jen, thank you. I cannot thank you enough for all those freezing nights when you came out there with fried chicken, chili, hot coffee, hot chocolate. The days when it was 100 degrees, you came out with Gatorade and (laugh) I miss that. I, I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Bill.
Christine, I wish you all the best.
Well, I appreciated what you guys did.
Glenn?
I thank you. What you guys told me over a year ago really, really meant a lot to me. I'm sorry I didn't tell you guys sooner.
That's all right.
But you'll be hearing from me again.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Anybody else? All right, to our city attorneys, are there a need for an executive session, Mike?
No, there's not. Motion to adjourn here.
Executive.
A motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Rocher for adjournment. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Giselle?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rocher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:14 P.M. Thank you and good evening.